Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Portsmouth School Board meeting for October 11th and 2011. I'd like to ask the superintendent to please take the roll call.
Anne Mayer. Carol Chelman.
Here.
Rebecca Emerson.
Here.
Kent LaPage. Leslie Stevens.
Here.
Ann Walker.
Here.
Mitch Shulman.
Here.
Tom Martin.
Here.
Dexter Legg.
Here.
Clay Haywood.
Here.
Linda Brulette.
Liz Boynton.
Here.
Thank you. So if I could ask you to join me for a moment of silence and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
A croak.
Yeah. I know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, sure.
Entertain a motion for except the minutes of September 27th.
So moved.
Any conversation?
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. So moving on, we have public comment period, and we have one person who's signed up, so that's great. So if I could ask Mary O'Lea to come to the microphone. Even though we know who you are, you need to say your name, say your address, and Anne will time you for three minutes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary O'Lea. I live at 379 Newcastle Avenue in Portsmouth. I won't take your three minutes, but I wanted to introduce myself as a candidate for a school board. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, even though you didn't sign up, fighting the urge to get up and stand in front of the microphone? Okay, thank you. So we'll move on, and we have some special presentations this evening.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Assistant Superintendent Steve Zadovic, Director of Pupil Instruction and Support Joanne Simons. I think Principal Shea at some point here will actually share with us this summer Learning Lab experience and some of the pluses and successes we had with it.
Thank you. We'd like to tell you a little story this evening of the program that we were able to put together this summer that brought students from all three of our elementary schools together for an intensive summer of support for their learning. And we titled it "The Summer Learning Lab" because in many ways it was a lab for both the teachers as well as administrators looking at effectiveness of summer programming. So one of the things that we'd like to point out as we go is how this program was a little different from what we typically do for students who may need additional programming in the summer. Having programming in the summer isn't anything new, but what was new in this case was the opportunity to take a step back and think about if we had our ideal summer program, if we were really to define what that should look like in line with our strategic vision of supporting all students to high levels and aligned with our professional learning community work and extending time for student learning, what would we do with that time that would be most effective? And then through the help and work of Principal Kate Callahan, able to find maybe some additional funding, which we'll talk a little more about later, that really helped us bring some of our dreams to reality for some summer programming for students. So just real quickly, some of the ways this program was different from what typically is organized in the summer, and I won't go into all of the past details of how we've run summer programs in the past, but it's fair to say that we've had multiple different programs happening at the same time, perhaps even disjointed, and maybe some overlap that was not necessarily necessary. So one thing that Joanne Simons in her position now in the district certainly helped us take a look at this summer was looking at a variety of different support programs that we have for students and sort of bringing them under one tent and having them have a common purpose for supporting student learning. So this program really connected multiple programs together. Another thing that was unique and that we've certainly looked at in research and additional time for students in learning is that dosage matters. It's not enough just to say, okay, here's a good lesson, have it once, and good luck till next September. We have to really look at a sustained program for student support, and so this program had a far greater dosage for students than we would typically see. And we'll get into more of the details later, but this was a four-week program in the summer, which is longer than we typically would see. As well as, you know, in summer programming, oftentimes we try to, you know, make things as absolutely lean as possible, but in doing that sometimes sacrifice some quality that we certainly know is best practice. And one of those things, and when we're talking about students who are really struggling, is to have a really low student-teacher ratio. And again, through some support that we had in this program, we were able to establish a very low student-teacher ratios for this intensive summer program. One of the other things that we've certainly struggled with in the past around summer programming is accessibility. And where we would hope to maximize the efficiency of locating the program in one place, it certainly creates a challenge for students who may live in a different part of the city. So no matter which school we would choose to house the program, we would have to overcome a barrier of transportation. And that barrier falls perhaps disproportionately on students who are challenged the most to have resource to get to a program like this. And so again, through some very generous grant funds, we were able to make transportation a non-issue for students and really make sure it's accessible to all students. Perhaps, though, the most unique thing about this summer program was what we looked at in terms of embedded professional development. And we'll talk a little more specifically about that later, but this is an idea that really generated from some of our teaching staff over the last couple of years in conversation for, when we talk about time in the summer with students, when can we take that opportunity and build in time for teacher collaboration as well in true professional development right alongside the instruction for students? So we may indeed have what we would say is a lab classroom to say we have teachers watching teachers teach and teachers talking about that after, and extended periods of time every day for teachers to engage in discussion of best practice and book studies and coaching and different modeling techniques. So all of that was designed into the professional development component of this program that we'll talk a little bit more specifically later. But I'll invite Joanne Simons to come up now and talk a little bit more about how the program sort of operated and where we went with it, and then we'll come back to some of the professional development.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. We were so excited to be working together this summer to really support a large number of students, something that we hadn't been able to do in the past at the elementary level. Many of you know and have asked questions in the past as to why does the Title I only service this particular student or special ed targets this particular child? This year, we were able to remove those barriers through a variety of different funding sources and say, this is a program that we want to have target all of our students who are at need. This past year, as an administrative PLC, professional learning community, we worked together to identify what we called our top 20 students across the board. And it was from this list of top 20 students, students that we were concerned about who were perhaps below benchmark on the DRA, were students who may not have performed proficiently on the kneecap, or students we were concerned about through such sources as our everyday math assessment or end-of-the-year math assessment, that we looked at these students and said, we can invite all of these students to participate in this program. That was a wonderful gift this year to not have to worry about working only with a Title I child from Don Darrow because they were eligible, or a special ed student who was two or more years below grade level for extended year services. We really were able to open the door, and that was, I think, a gift for staff and for students. What we did do is we made a point of looking at multiple sources of data, those points that I just mentioned to you. What was really wonderful is we're at a point now where all three buildings talk the same language. We're looking for the same type of a student to be our Summer Learning Lab kid. And through that conversation, we also knew where we wanted our students to go. And so really relying on multiple data sources was important in identifying who we wanted there. We were able to focus on two areas. We were focusing on reading and math, as I mentioned, in terms of the data sources. And through our coaching, and we'll describe that a little bit more, and through conversations with administrators, we wanted to dedicate 90 minutes to both math and reading through study groups, through conversations with teachers, and really looking at what students' individual needs were and targeting them. We had student profiles. What was nice, building upon the top 20 list, was that we knew exactly who these kids were, so we turned to teachers and said, fill out a profile, give us the data, we want that to work from, but also tell us about these kids. How do they learn best? How do they work well? And we were able to build right upon that. I think what was really essential is we bridged the end of the school year into the following year by doing four weeks right in the center, and that was really important as well. So, and we'll talk a little bit more about this, but contact with families. We wanted to make sure parents knew why their child was selected, knew what was going to be happening, and we really worked on communicating, so that was key. So next, we'll talk a little bit about what was going on. And so what were the teachers required to do? And they actually dedicated a great deal of time to this program, up to six hours a day. So what we were working on is 60 minutes of daily planning before kids and after kids, along with 90 minutes of focused professional development. You're working either with a reading coach or a math coach and working in small groups. All teachers were able to work from this text, teaching reading in small groups, which we're now building upon this school year. We have a number of projects going on at the three buildings focused around continuing this conversation. We had 18 teachers participate in Summer Learning Lab, and they left saying, what can we do next? So that was really a gift. And finally, thinking about next steps, next slide, Mr. Zadovic. So what were our indicators of success? Now, that was important to us and also, I think, important to those people involved in the process. What were we looking for wasn't just student performance, and I will say, we are pleased to say right now, 86 percent, we have a few more kids we're collecting data on, 86 percent of our students either maintained or grew in reading and math. So that's tremendous for a summer program. We had over 80 percent attendance rate, which is outstanding for summer, working around camps and vacations and whatnot, and also looking at the assessments this coming year. Teachers knew right where kids were, right where they wanted to go. We knew who was going to be working with a reading specialist, who was going to be with a math interventionist when they walked in the door in September. That's exceptional. And then we're following up now, we're finishing up kneecaps, sorry, yeah, I should say we're finishing up kneecaps. I think people wish they were done, but we're very close in finishing up those kneecaps. DRAs we're finishing for our third, fourth, and fifth graders, and everyday math assessments are continually going on, and we're looking and saying, what is this telling us? I think we'll have more to learn next summer, and we hope to replicate this program so we can have some long-range data around our kids, but we're really looking at multiple points to indicate success. One of our greatest indicators, I think, is our relationships with families, and George Shea is going to share that next.
Thank you for having me, everyone. I guess I'm about relationships, so speak to that.
You're all about relationships.
I guess that's what it's about. Thank you for calling on me for those things. So I think what she's more speaking to is really the communications that were necessary to go on to make the Summer Learning Lab a success. I think having teachers and teams and parents envelop children is a crucial part of any educational growth, and that really happened there this summer, a lot at New Franklin. We hired Chris Grady Wilson to be the project coordinator for this, and she is the tutorial coordinator for Harbor Learning at New Franklin School, too, and she just has an amazing outreach abilities and manages to be a perfect liaison between people and just does a wonderful job of communicating with families. So I think having her as a point person was really key because she was able to connect the teachers with the students that were coming in based on their old teachers that were, they were leaving at Don Darrow in Franklin Little Harbor, and connect them to the new students and act as that liaison, as well as bring the parent piece in. She was able to take, well, we were all able to take that end-of-year learning data and use it to immediately figure out where kids were and what they needed at that point. And I think that was really key for the teachers that were working in the program to have a starting point and see immediately what they needed. As far as the communication pieces, weekly notices were sent home about what was going on in the Learning Lab. At the end of the project, there were student reports about each child's growth that was key, and at the end, there was a parent survey sort of to say what they thought went well. And there's some great data here, and it's funny, Joanne picked a different number than I, which said, how satisfied were you with the progress? I was looking at, do you fear your child benefited from the summer school program, which had 100 percent return on it? Satisfied, did have one that was somewhat dissatisfied, was probably like a bad snack day or something like that. So, you know, those are the things, just, you know, I look at, did your child benefit? And the answer on that was unanimous. So that's the thing that stuck out to me. There are other pieces, too. We had, through the Little Harbor Foundation, we were able to have our library open every Wednesday that week throughout the summer, sorry. And that entertained 225 visitors, and over 1,000 books were circulated during that time. That wasn't just for Learning Lab students, that was open to the entire community at that time. And also, we were able to send home leveled books, Just Write Books Home with Students Weekly, which is a really key piece of having that connection from school to home and having books that they can access and that they can read at home. And that was another, sort of the thinking behind another project that we did this summer that was at New Franklin that was Title I funded that I just wanted to comment on. I think you have some info on this in your packet, but as you know, regression is a big issue with summer, summer regression. Students leave in one place and come back having receded academically, and especially in reading. And that's something that we always combat, and it's something that summer programs and summer learning programs can really help. But as you can see, there's just a huge lot of man, there's a lot of manpower and work required for that. So one thing that we were able to do this summer through Title I funding was a You've Got Mail program. And this was a program that sent leveled text books home to students every week. We did it for kindergarten students, all students going from kindergarten to first grade, and some students who are struggling readers moving from first to second grade. And it was like real mail, and that's what we liked about it so much. Like, it wasn't addressed to your parents, it wasn't addressed to anyone, you know, guardians of or anything like that. It was just, you got a big brown envelope in the mail as a child every Thursday, and you got to open it up, and inside were books. And we thought that, you know, right there, you get a little bit of push, you know, just, you get to open something, you know, you could have dirt in there, and that would be, you know, you just get a little push right there. But the fact that you have books, and they're books that they can immediately open and read and say, look, Mom, look, Dad, I can read this, and that they can practice on those texts as well as sight words, you know, we sent them home every week. And I should really thank, you know, Joanne for helping really fund this and help plot out the vision. And Linda Beal, who was the person that really took every student, she's a reading specialist at New Franklin, and figured out what they needed. She took where they were and where she sort of wanted them, and she charted a path and laid it out throughout the whole summer. And the results were wonderful in that we also had feedback cards, and kids would fill out a little chart that they would, a little postcard that they would send back after they'd read a certain number of books, and they were entered in a raffle for a prize. And there was great feedback on those because the kids could write notes, but, you know, I'm all about the data. And so one piece of data that we got back is when we started DRA-ing kids in the fall and looking at their reading levels. And like I said, over the summer, we hope that kids maintain the level where we left them. And if you look at the data from the past few years, which I think I included in packets, if you look 2008 to 2009 summer, same subgroup, students going from K to 1, we had 64 percent of our students reading at the same text level, 13 percent reading at a lower level, and 23 percent reading at a higher level. That's coming back. The previous summer, and this is more typical, we had 87 percent of the students reading at the same level, which is a good thing and what we want. It shows that there's strong foundation, strong teaching, and that kids are practicing. 6 percent were reading at a higher level, and 6 percent were reading at a lower level. I can't entirely attribute this to the You've Got Mail program, but I have to look at what variables have changed, and this was one of them. This summer, when we surveyed our DRAs of our first graders, 72 percent of our students returned reading at a higher level with an average text level increase of two DRA levels. No students returned to reading at a lower level, and 28 percent read at the same level. So it's a drastic difference than, we only have three years of data on this, but a really dramatic difference. So when we're looking towards what we can do, programs that we can use to supplement programs like the Learning Lab, this was a fairly inexpensive solution that I think yielded some really promising results. So again, I want to thank Joanne, I want to thank Linda Beal, the reading specialist at New Franklin, one of ours, and whoever invented self-adhesive stamps because we used a lot of them. I think the primary costs were in postage, the books were actually fairly cheap. But it was a great program, and I thank you for your time, and I think I'm turning it over to someone else now.
Okay.
Oh, Steve, sir.
So I guess we'll pause for questions in terms of the Summer Learning Lab.
Okay. Yes, Dexter.
So first, this is, I mean, this is just terrific stuff, and the results, the performance results speak for themselves. Are there any specific things that you learned in the lab that you can incorporate into the normal reading lessons during the year?
Yeah, you know, and that was a question teachers asked themselves all through the four weeks because the point wasn't just to say, hey, let's create a small class that we'll never see again until next summer. The point was, let's take an opportunity to really practice some small group strategies that we would then transfer into the classroom. And so I, you know, I'm sure other teachers could probably speak more specifically to what those strategies look like in the classroom, but that was a thought throughout the whole piece, was looking at what we were learning about effective instruction with students, and then how would you apply that in the classroom?
So the hope, though, is not just the 18 teachers that participated, but that, system-wide, that that would be incorporated into our reading programs?
Right, and one of the things that this lab was also kind of a model for us for is how teachers function as a professional learning community. And so in those collaborative professional conversations as they're sharing with each other is the same sharing that they will go back and do at their grade levels, and when they look at instruction with their peers at grade level and share some of those strategies, and also in the time we have teachers for professional development, such as last Friday's In Service Day as well. The other thing that was nice about this program, as we had students, and I think Joanne and George alluded to it, as students entered this year, they entered with a whole different set of information around them. And those teachers who got those students, obviously not all of them were involved with the Summer Learning Lab, but they were the benefactors really of having a lot more information on their students in transition. And so I think we've expanded the knowledge base in a few different ways for what works for kids and which kids it works for.
Terrific. Thank you.
Anne.
I'm very impressed with everything. It's very, very exciting. I think what impressed me the most, other than the fact of the bridging in the middle because you certainly do know how much they lose, but having it not too close to the beginning and not too close to the end, how diagnostically specific you were for every child. And not only is that wonderful for saving time for your lab in the summer, but again, as the receiving teacher at the end, to have all that information then so quickly. That's wonderful, absolutely wonderful.
Carol, you had your hand up?
Yes, I echo the comments about what a great job you guys did and great results. I guess I just had a question regarding, you mentioned the low student-teacher ratio. How important do you think that was in getting the results that you got, and could you explain why that is?
Yeah, well, one of the things that we wanted to do with this program, when we say low student-teacher ratio, it doesn't mean 10 students, 10 teachers with five students each all in a different place, but what we wanted to take advantage of was having enough teachers that we could actually have peers observing peers. So it wasn't as if every teacher was doing the same thing all at the same time. But in order to achieve, you know, a teacher teaching a class of 10, you know, with somebody watching them, then we essentially have two teachers for a class of 10 or one teacher for every five students. So that was approximately the ratio we tried to achieve, but it was for two purposes. One was to have small group instruction, really work at what that looks like and have the accompanying text that Joanne showed you. But the other was so that we could create peer observation, you know, opportunities for people.
Thank you.
Yes, Tom.
I just wanted to comment that I think the other piece that's very obvious to me is the cumulative effect, you know, that we're having, as well as just the flywheel effect, that, you know, these kids are suddenly starting, a teacher gets these students and is the beneficiary of kids that are already starting at a much higher level. So the learning automatically at the beginning of the year starts at a much higher level, and, you know, these kids are going to finish the year potentially at a much higher level than they would have started so that, you know, the next year and the following year, you know, we're going to have kids that cumulatively will actually be doing better. And then my other question is on the teachers who are actually sitting in and watching other teachers teach, you know, what's the feasibility of doing that during the school year? And are you going to go in maybe in the next part in terms of some of the benefits that we're having with the PLCs with that work? I mean, that seems like a really...
Yeah, right, well, there's two things, I think. One, in terms of the cumulative effect you spoke about, one of the things we certainly intend and will do is to look at the effect of students who are involved in this program and really track their progress over time. Because although we could take some measures at the end of the four weeks, I don't know if that's truly the measure we're looking for. A lot of times, there's almost a euphoric, okay, this was a great program, great experience effect, people are really happy, but what's the lasting effect? And I think that's the piece that we'll certainly look at when we get kneecap results back. We certainly look at when we finish DRA assessments, when we do our mid and end-of-year math assessments. So we do hope to look at the effect of these kinds of programs and other supports through the year. But in terms of the peer observation, and one thing that Mr. McDonough has set up in the evaluation system is to have a peer cycle within the whole, so every two years, a teacher has it as their responsibility to take on some level of peer observation and discussion around their practice by observing. So we're kind of moving down that road anyway, but it certainly fits it within the philosophy of the professional learning communities where our hope is that we would be able to set up opportunities for the first-grade team to, you know, observe each other doing different lessons and sustain some of the work we started last year, which, if you recall, was around lesson study, which was essentially that same model, which is, okay, let's collaboratively craft a lesson, and then let's observe each other, teach it. So it's something that I think we're working ourselves into more habit with and I think more comfort with. Great, thanks.
Leslie.
What's the likelihood that this will continue next summer? Or something new and better?
Yeah, well, and as George alluded to, we have a number of different strategies we're trying to put together, and we certainly want to find the most efficient ones. This, and we'll get to some acknowledgement in a moment, but, you know, this couldn't have happened in the way that it did without the kind of support that Joanne alluded to and the generous donation from the Little Harbor Charitable Foundation. But what we hope to do is learn from this and say, okay, so how else would we organize this kind of experience, or how else can we support it and sustain it? And one of the things that I think that we certainly can look at is just taking what we've learned from this summer, look at the effects, and then, you know, keep evolving something next year. We certainly want to keep the momentum going, but maybe, you know, size it to whatever size we have to make it.
Can I ask one more question?
Of course.
Were all the elementary school libraries open one day a week, or is it just...
It was just New Franklin, I believe, but all of the, it was something that anyone who could have taken the opportunity, right.
So I just have a couple of quick questions. So I was curious, and maybe you could just elaborate a little bit. I mean, one of the comments that really hit me was that the language... I mean, one of the comments that really hit me was that the language used was, all three buildings talk the same language. So could you talk about that a little bit, in terms of what we're talking about here?
Yeah, the, I mean, the real power in this program was, we had teachers from every elementary school as lab teachers, and we had coaches working with those teachers, bringing those teachers together. And, you know, what we found was that there was a lot of sharing of practice and sharing of strategies that worked with kids, because I might be a teacher in this classroom, but I'll have a student that was in your classroom in a different school. And so there was a lot of rich conversation, right down to the needs of the students based on that. But the afternoon professional development was probably the most powerful piece for that, because teachers really had an opportunity to develop some common language, for example, around that small group literacy instruction, and had a common text. And even though people entered that maybe at different places, they were able to share some effective strategies. And so I think we have an even more common language around reading and math, instruction and support in all three schools, which is well timed, of course, because this year, as you know, all three of our elementary schools have some intervention time built into their day. And of course, part of the design of this summer program was to develop working strategies that we would also be using during intervention block during the day.
Right. And so these 18 teachers now have the opportunity to take what they learned in this summer professional learning community and actually broaden that conversation throughout the year with their colleagues in their buildings.
Right.
The other question I had really was, so looking at George, the sheet that you gave out, so this is just New Franklin, change of, just New Franklin? And this is based off of the same model, meaning you take data from the end of the year, you take the same data, same exam, same instrument at the beginning of the next year, and that's where you've noticed this change? Right. And so, and I'm sure, without going into it, you've tracked the same information for every one of these top 20 students, right? So you see how their growth, because that's separate data, that's not a part of here, but some of them might be a part of this, just not separated out.
These are grade-level specific?
With a short answer, I guess it wouldn't be important, but...
So now you have to elaborate.
That particular one is grade-level specific. So that's kindergarten going into first grade, so tracking that group every year. But yes, we do have it for every single student, and yes, there are students in the top 20 on that list.
That were in K through one, that are now in first grade that were in kindergarten.
Yes. And as well as first grade going into second grade, you know, we have those stats, too. But since I didn't put that in, because not all those students were part of the You've Got Mail program, so...
Okay. And do all the elementary schools have similar data for their...
About, I think the DRA data, spring and fall? Yes, we should.
It'd be interesting to see as well. And what's, so just one last question. You can answer it, George, Steve can answer it. So what was, what actually was the cost over the course of the summer for this four-week program?
Joanne might actually be the best to answer that.
Why do I want to have a total number of students?
So Mitch, in terms of thinking about both programs, you're asking, the Summer Learning Lab was definitely our big-ticket item to include the cost of salaries for staff, for transportation, which was our big-ticket item. We offered childcare for staff members, as well as purchased texts and materials. There was a total amount of about $30,000 plus for that program, from soup to nuts. That also counted for some contracted service by our math consultants and literacy consultants. So that was a very different type of a program. That was about teaching and learning, I think, for kids and adults. The You've Got Mail, which I funded through our Title I funds, came, again, soup to nuts and thinking about stipend for the person who meticulously and brilliantly, I have to say, planned that, Linda Beal, as you've heard, and the mailing and postage in books, came to close to, I think in total, about $3,800.
Thank you. Dexter, you had a question?
So, Steve, you might have said this, how many total students were involved in this program?
Sixty...
Around sixty.
Around sixty, so 20 from each of the elementary schools fundamentally, or...
Right. Yeah, more or less.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
What a nice thing to hear about.
Sure, and actually, if we could invite the chair down to present for us, because as we've alluded to, this program would not be, have not been successful, would not have been able to exist in the form it did without the very generous donation from the Little Harbor Charitable Foundation. So I'd like to invite Mitch Shulman. If we could have Paul and Anna Grace Holloway.
Don't be shy, come on now.
I'm Mitch Shulman.
Paul Holloway.
So on behalf of the children of Portsmouth, I'd like to thank you for generosity. I think you heard from the presentation that they gave and the reaction of the school board how much we appreciate this kind of community support.
Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it very much. If you'd like to say a few words?
I would. First, I'd like to introduce our committee, Dennis and Carolyn Cludier. Stand up, come on. Marcy McCann, Don Braybent, and my wife, Anna Grace. We thank you very much. We really didn't have much choice. Kate and Joanne came to see us, and when they told the story, it was done. Our motto is, kids are future, and we believe that. We raised this money through a little fishing tournament, and for 13 years, we've been able to distribute over $1,600,000 in the seacoast from our fishing tournament. It's very, very important to us that kids get a good foundation, because without that, you really don't have much of a student. Someday, I'd like to come and talk to you about your math requirements to graduate from high school. Ed, you know where I'm at on that. But we're going to be there for this program next year. We're committing right now. We want to make it bigger, we want to make it better, we want to make it more meaningful. And I think that it's really important that every kid in Portsmouth gets a shot at going, leaving their elementary school and going on to middle school and high school with an opportunity to go wherever they can go. And we all believe that. And I think that you should be congratulated with the principles that you have. You're very fortunate. These are people who believe in the system, and they believe in their students. And we believe in them. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you again, and just to say, you're more than welcome to spend the rest of the time here with us if you'd like, but we wouldn't be offended if you got up and went home.
Thank you.
It's bad enough we have to stay. So moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, members of the board, I've included the hard copy of an article I believe Ms. Chelman had asked me to share with the entire school board entitled Dollars and Cents: The Cost Effectiveness of Small Schools. I have also provided you an update on enrollment information for each of the district schools, K to, PK to 12, actually, here in the district. So you'll note that despite the lower birth rate, and it's actually reflected in our lower K numbers at 163 pupils, we continue to see a good deal of in-migration. The entire district enrollment is at 2,688 students, which is 42 over the NASDAQ projection we had used a year ago. What's interesting is that PK 5 is actually up 57 pupils, and we're down 15 in grades six through 12. So...
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Sure. We're up, we're up over the NASDAQ projection by 42 pupils. We're at 2,688.
Yep.
And where we saw the in-migration was really in K 5 schools, we're up 57 pupils there than what we projected. We thought we'd have 1,044, we are just at 1,101. And we've lost 15 pupils in grades six through, six through 12. And you can see what the, you know, the elementary school class sizes happen to be. They're, as we expected, they would be well above 20 in certain grades. There are two distinct grades, I believe it's K at 163 and the third grade at 166 pupils or somewhere there in. Otherwise, the grade levels are about 190, and there's actually one grade at 200-plus pupils in the elementary school. I, I'll move on, you have a draft memo provided, it's a draft copy of a memorandum of understanding between the Chinese National Office for Teaching Chinese as a foreign language, the Portsmouth School Department, and the University of New Hampshire. We had talked about this last spring, you'll remember Yigui Wang came and talked a little bit about this program. There are still a few items to be resolved by legal counsel, particularly the indemnification clause, but we hope this MOU stands as, you know, a harbinger, that we're hopeful to have a Chinese instructor here at Portsmouth High School beginning in the second semester. And our long-term goal would be to have an additional person come in the fall at Portsmouth Middle School to be able to teach Chinese language and culture. And in fact, if all goes well, there may be the opportunity to bring a third person over and do some work at the elementary school level as well. So that's in progress, and we hope to have that happening. You know, on the subject of cultural exchange, it's not in your packet here or your agenda, but I would like to thank all the host families and students, as well as Principal Collins, and especially Mr. Zadrivik for their efforts last week in hosting 17 students from Nichin on Japan. There's a lot of legwork and background work that goes on, and I know Steve does a wonderful job of putting that together, and I think it was just a great week in combination with the city and recognizing, you know, on the city side, it's just well done. And so kudos to Steve and everybody for their work there. I did provide you the policy committee minutes for August, and as well as a letter, a draft letter. I did share last week some emails with Commissioner Barry, asking her advice on how we might best proceed to get a change on the state's policy around school choice absent a waiver statewide. She noted that a letter from the school board addressing the impacts would be very helpful, and so I've put together a draft letter on behalf of the board, and if this meets with folks' approval, we can get it out the door tomorrow with her. She did share with me that she'd be setting up a committee of superintendents to pretty much examine the issue and then to make a recommendation back to her, so that should be getting underway as well in the next week or so. That's essentially the superintendent's report.
So let's just take a step back and see if there's questions about something, other things that came up.
I have a question about your letter to Commissioner Barry. Is this something that's also going to be sent to lawmakers and our representatives?
That could easily CC anyone you wish, sure.
Because I think if it's a policy choice, it might, I don't know what the legal process is, I don't know if it has to go through, but...
If it's a policy choice, it may not be up to the elected officials to do that?
Right.
But maybe to the members of the State Board of Education?
Or certainly to, you know, let them know what's going on and how this policy is not effective in our community.
Sure. Clay and Dexter, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question under cultural exchange. Under the subject of the Chinese speaking, would that be, would we actually have someone come over here from China trying to teach our students Mandarin Chinese? I was, I was just curious.
Right, and one of the impediments has been that, you know, most students going on to post-secondary school need three years of a language. And so our ESOL instructor, Mr. Wang, is able to teach some introductory Chinese, but without a three-year sequence, students only pick that up after they've taken their already course of study in Spanish or French. So by having this resource come, we can sequence it such that students are able to take three years of Chinese, and that can be their, their one foreign language, if you will, in their course of study.
And would writing also be involved in that as well?
Right, and so I'm not going to get into the, they've talked with Nancy Modurn and what the curriculum will actually look like, but it'll mirror pretty much the experience a student has in Spanish or French. In other words, it will be, it would be what the expectation would be for any student at the high school taking foreign language.
Very good, thank you.
Dexter.
No, I'm good, thanks.
Leslie.
Following up on Clay, there's no cost to this program, correct? The teacher exchange program?
So it's all paid for through the National Office of Chinese Language and Culture. They set up $10,000 for a ceremony, as you'll see in the MOU. They provide funds of $20,000 to set up a classroom and designate one for the Confucius Classroom, and then they pay the salary of the teacher. Our obligation is to basically have the teacher work the load that we would have any other teacher at the high school full-time work. So they teach three courses, they have a block off, et cetera. So there's no cost to us.
It's a phenomenal opportunity.
Dexter.
I guess the one thing I would ask about that program, do you get a sense that there's a long-term commitment? I mean, the MOU is for one year, but presumably, and that one year presumably is an evaluation year to make sure we're satisfied and presumably they're satisfied with us.
That's right.
But, but once you get through that, can you then establish sort of a long-term relationship and a commitment so that we know that it's a program that is sustainable for us?
We think it will be. I mean, but we haven't even determined the length of this MOU. That was left blank, actually, in there, in calling for automatic renewal, but Mr. Wang has gone and visited, and he actually has recruited the person we think we're going to be able to bring here, and it's a two-year commitment for that instructor.
Okay.
And if all things go well, actually, his wife would come and actually work at the middle school. They're both highly qualified teachers who would, you know, are at that, and the name escapes me, and this is awful, but the high school that we're going to have the relationship with in the Western, Steve, can you remember?
Anba?
No, Shindu? Yeah, but it's a particular high school where we're recruiting this talent from.
It's private, too, isn't it?
Yes.
So I just have... Anyone else have questions?
I just have a quick question.
Okay.
Regarding the letter to Virginia Barry.
Yes.
Now, practically speaking, from the perspective of a parent, next year in the fall, if parents exercise choice, we will have to honor that. This letter is not going to change that, this would affect the following year?
No, I'm asking her to change her policy effective for next fall, right.
Didn't I read something in the paper today that said that the state declined to give waivers? They're going to consider it in February?
I would distinguish what, you know, the notion of applying for a waiver, and I think there are two thresholds to get in states with the US DOE. Most people are going to submit in February, it would not apply. But they have policy guidance.
Okay.
A state can make a determination.
I got it, yeah, I got it, thank you.
Okay. So I just had two quick questions. So going back to the school enrollment, so just to be clear in my mind, so there are 57 more pupils who are attending our elementary school than we thought would, and so you're suggesting that that's from in-migration?
No question.
Okay, so what is some of...
They came here.
You mean they migrated in? So do we have any, so fine. Do we have any sense of, like, different scenarios as to where these students are coming from?
I think, I think maybe each of the principals, I know Kate might speak to that when she gets up, right. There's been some...
Okay, so we can talk about that later when you do your presentation. And the other question about the Chinese program was, so if students take these courses, they will count equally as a foreign language, as if it was in French or Spanish on their transcript and going to college?
Yes.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Now we're onto district reports, so Mr. Shea will have a visit again.
Good to be back, thanks.
Good to have you back, George.
So really, thank you, it's great to be able to come here at the beginning of the year and sort of talk about what's, what's going on and how the year's begun. Just some notes on some general school highlights, and we've been really focused on a lot of staff development. Last Friday, we had an In Service Day that really did a lot of, we did a lot of work in literacy and writing about reading. Last year, we, we spent a lot of time developing strong interactive read-alouds for students with accountable talk from students about that literature. And now we're, we're looking to leverage that work into students developing really insightful writing in response to their reading. And we're going through and spending time embedding that in curriculum maps and... And we're going through and spending time embedding that in curriculum maps and making sure that we ramp it up as we go through every grade level and that students have a heightened experience and a more ambitious experience with each grade level. In math, we sort of are continuing to beat the same drum in another way of working on math reasoning and written and verbal expression of that reasoning. This was something we've been working on for about three years, and you can see it in many of the SMART goals, in the PLC work. It's heavily, we're really working on getting students to emphasize and articulate their reasoning verbally and through writing. And in the end, you know, both, both our literacy and math work sort of conjoin into this, this written expression of, of knowledge that's, that's a nice little blend that's been going on. It's been a big push, and it's been showing nicely on our local assessments and in the state assessment. So, we hope to have continued growth there based on our own professional development that we've been targeting. Also new to New Franklin this year is the Fresh Fruits and Vegetables Program. Last spring, we received a $14,000 grant from the USDA to provide a fresh fruit and vegetable snack each day to every New Franklin student. It's really an amazing thing and a wonderful thing. I really just want to thank our cafeteria staff and our new nutrition director, Deb Rizzo, who, who managed to make it happen every single day. There's a whole lot of slicing and dicing, and Deb does a really nice job adding an educational component to the snacks every, every day. And later this year, we hope to have, we've been talking with some students from the UNH Nutrition Cooperative. We're going to come, come in every Friday and create educational activities around the food and, and really just enrich the process. The kids are extremely excited about it. The teachers are also pretty giddy about it. The fruit flies are really giddy about it because they seem to just descend on us like a plague of locusts every day. But we've learned about balsamic vinegar and all those things that help attract and kill the fruit fly, so. But it's been an amazing program. We've sort of continued on our, our facelift at the exterior of the building, trying to give it a little more warmth. Last year, we built the garden. This year, we, we used to have a big fence that was sort of like a, sort of faux penitentiary style fence, chain link, and we brought that down, and now it's, you know, a nice, simple post and beam fence that we can add different components to and putting some lattice in. And it's a really nice sort of community piece because everybody comes up every day and goes, "You know what you should do over there? You know what you should do over there?" So, we gradually take good ideas and take, especially people say, "You know what I should do over there?", and I'm willing to grab all the stuff and do it, and take advantage of those resources. And I also want to thank Kenny Lynch, who really did a, a lot of work, our maintenance director, in pushing that project forward, relining all the kickballs and things that needed to be done and getting things ready for school. I was going to talk about the Summer Learning Lab, but I think we talked a lot about it already. The thing that I, that sort of stuck with me though from the Summer Learning Lab, and I think Mitch alluded to some of this, of how we folded into what we do in school on a regular basis, or maybe it was Tom. And I, I remember quotes from teachers that persist where they say, you know, "Just imagine if we could teach like this every day." And, and that kind of talk has really gained momentum and mass. It's sort of almost seditious at this point, like where, you know, people really want to say, like, "How could we set that up? How, what could we do with a school like that? Maybe we should start a charter school." It's like, no, don't do that, please. So, we'll try and figure it out. But no, so we've tried to fold that work in so that, you know, we have this sort of teacher instructional loop that goes on. A lot of our PLC work to this point has been really looking at things from the student's side. We've spent a really good bit of time developing tools and responses to remedial and enrichment interventions. Now, we're sort of turning all that towards initial instruction, I think, and taking a, a really two-pronged approach and finding that time and using our weekly PLC meetings for teachers to have that Summer Learning Lab sort of experiential time where they can, one, reflect on what they've taught, where they can look at the student data and see where are the gaps in instruction now that we have for years or so of pretty reliable data? Where are the gaps in instruction and how can we remediate them? And so, it's nice that we have the additional time this year, too, because that's, that's another piece of that. You know, we've added 15 minutes, I think, to each school this day, which by my calculation gets us eight days of instruction, like eight days of instruction just like that. And, you know, that's really meaty time, and I think we did it pretty seamlessly. So, it enables us to do those things that we're talking about and all those experiences in the Summer Learning Lab. We're able to find time for teachers to meet and not just reflect on student learning outcomes and how they can remediate those, but also look at the Tier One instruction and their work and how they can fill in those gaps. As far as PLC implementation goes, right now, teams are sort of in the middle of their first intervention cycle in math, some of which is being interrupted by kneecap stuff, but in the lower grades, that's certainly the case. And at Franklin this year, we've, we've extended intervention block from four to five days. We're sort of at a place where we have the capacity to do that now, and I think it was with little bit, it just didn't require as much of a leap to do so, and I think teachers felt it was sort of a natural course and, and fit well with our CINNIE plan. I think I attached a couple specimens of Team SMART goals, one in literacy, one in math, just to give you a sense of the thinking. And I think you'll see that if you looked, I only gave you one from each grade level, one from each side of that because they're all pretty consistent. And we've, we've had a big sort of philosophical push on, on going deep versus going long. And I think those SMART goals go really deep, and we make sure that kids have extremely solid foundations, that they can apply to other learning and apply to other, at other disciplines as well. And we really focus, and teachers have spent a lot of time just growing strong roots in learners. Let's see, coming up, let's see, we have a Family Math Night coming up in November. That's always a great event, usually our first of two Family Math Nights for the year. I encourage you sometime to visit the New Franklin Wiki, which is sort of our main forum for updated New Franklin information because parents and staff can both contribute to New Franklin's just really pretty dead serious about Halloween. We have upcoming, upcoming on the 28th, if you stop by in the afternoon, 28th, we have our parade, which is like if you want to see a horrific march of people going down Dennis Street of like terrifying tinkerbells and savage storm troopers, come on by. Also, we have our haunted halls, which sort of take over the school for an evening on the 29th, the Saturday night, which is always an amazing community experience of people that go in to transform a school. Some of the, sometimes those are the little things, the people that are, you know, ripping trash bags and, you know, hanging them from rafters together that are an important part of the, the local school experience that we don't always share at these meetings. And so, I hope some of you can come by to see it. So, thank you for your time. Any questions?
Great. Any questions for George? Rebecca.
Hi.
Hi. Hello.
I have a question. If you could talk about the loss of the outreach counselor this year? I know it's still early in the school year.
Yeah.
But have you noticed any impact? And several years ago, we lost the resource officer, so we're sort of losing those out-of-school supports.
Yes, it's, you know, like, it's been a loss, I'll say that, and it's been difficult. You know, we have a lot of children in difficult situations, and Guidance has done a good job of, more than a good job of stepping up to try and address those, but it's certainly a resource shortage. And we have kids with needs that are hard to, you know, it's just the math of fewer resources spread over the same amount of needs. And so, some of those needs are difficult to meet in the same, same skill level that we once did or with the same amount of responsiveness. But like I said, we have had some, some good support from Guidance, and we do have a floating Guidance person who has been able to help out at each of the three buildings. Next week, I believe, we're meeting with Seacoast Mental Health to talk about having an in-school counselor, similar to what I believe the high school has on some part-time basis. I may be wrong on that. So, we're looking to establish relationships like that. So, we have an in-house trained therapist in the building, which would be great to recover, so.
Okay. Other questions? I have two, two quick questions. Sure. So, I'm just curious, so that, for example, the SMART goal that you gave us to look at this year was, so at least 85% of first graders can read at grade level by the end of the year. So, is that, is that a goal that you've actually been tracking year to year? Is that...
Yes.
The same number you're looking at, 85%, or has that number changed?
That number changes. We, we track these every year, so we'll start in September with a baseline, and then right around early November, we'll all meet and grade-level teams will meet with reading specialists who they meet with monthly, or they meet with twice a month. And they'll set goals for each individual student and then benchmarks towards that goal. So, we typically will DRA children of concern in January and then everyone else again in the spring. But any student that, that we want to really track progress on will do throughout the year. So, we call them the Yellow Sheets, but we, we set goals for each, each student in order to get to these types of numbers. We're also, that, this grade-level team, first grade, is sort of wanting to change how they look at things and through their professional, their professional goals this year, are looking about what it means to make a year's worth of growth and how we can start tracking those things a little bit better. So, if a student came into first grade, reading at an end of first grade level, okay, they're already in this 85%, so they're, they're locked in, and that's a given. But they really want to look at, how can we ensure that each student has a year of growth? And start to look at that type of data so that they know that they're taking each student where they are and bringing them forward at least a year. So, that's what, something the specific team's working on.
Okay. Thank you. Great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Grossman, Little Harbor School.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us here. I wanted to start off tonight saying congratulations to my staff. Obviously, I think you all know that we faced some challenges as we kind of sailed through August and into September. And I can't say enough about how lucky I am to have the people that I do in my building from start to finish. You know, last year when we, we did staff evaluations, one of the things that came up again and again and again from staff is the power of collaboration. And so many people said, "Working with the people on my team makes me a better teacher." And I put out a call to staff in August to brainstorm around some of the things that we could do to make sure that there's a successful school year. And, and they just flooded me with all kinds of ideas, and the collaboration from, from really day one of this year, I just feel like these people have been extra on it. I know it's a very elegant way of saying that, but I think you get my, my point. So, I'm thankful to have the people I do. The instructional paraprofessionals that you folks authorized us hiring, I have to say, I think that is working out really exactly as how we envisioned it. Almost all of these people are either certified educators currently or are in a teacher education program, and they are planning alongside of the teachers, under the direction of teachers, and so they are working, a lot of things you've kind of already heard about tonight, working with strategy groups in reading, working with math intervention groups. So, they are doing that work, and it's just working out beautifully. Again, a collaborative effort that I've been very, very pleased with and very thankful for. And finally, thanks and congratulations to our parent volunteers who in a similar sort of fashion have really stepped up. As of roughly mid-September, we had 191 people who had committed to be parent volunteers at some level at Little Harbor. Some people are in only sporadically, and some people are in almost every day. And, you know, Scott McKee and I and other people, we had talked about this quite a bit, clearly just the work that they do that saves our teachers and allows them to plan and prepare for their instruction. But more than just the work, I, I think the synergy and the communication and the camaraderie between the staff and the parents, it, it just, it makes us a better school and a stronger community. And it's a big part of what makes Little Harbor special, and I'm, I'm very appreciative of all the, and it's work. It's work that parents do. A lot of it's just plain old grunt work, standing at the copier. So, anyway, it's been, been fantastic. Around the professional learning communities this year, our big news is the implementation of a math intervention block at Little Harbor. And so, in grades one through five, we will have four days a week, 30 minutes a day. We will have generally between five and six groups of students working, receiving targeted instruction at their math level. And so, what teachers have done is they started off with last year's end-of-year math assessment, looked across the grade level at strengths and weaknesses, and then they started to decide what kind of intervention cycles they were going to work on and what skills they were going to work on. And then they've been developing pre-assessments to measure where those kids are at now in Fall 2011, and they have started that work, dividing those kids up into groups and providing with the targeted instruction they need or the enrichment that they need. And so, that's very exciting. A lot of our time and effort is focused on that work. In terms of our literacy instruction, our PLC work in literacy, again, a lot of it is kind of what Joanne and George have already talked about. We used the book that Joanne showed you, Teaching Reading in Small Groups, we used that last year. It was part of our CINNIE plan, it was a big focus in our professional development work in literacy, and we're continuing that work this year. And so, we are setting up flexible strategy groups so that when we see that kids in a classroom have a similar need around needing to learn a particular reading strategy, like perhaps making inferences or something like that, we are grouping those kids, and those kids are receiving instruction. And this year, I think with some of our numbers, it's a very efficient way for us to deliver instruction. Last year, we did a lot of work on responding to text in writing, and this year, we are kind of also working on helping kids and giving kids the tools to talk about text and to talk about reading. And so, those oral responses will build a foundation on which to build those written responses. But it's really, in terms of literacy, it's a fairly seamless continuation of what we did last year. We've done a lot of work on school climate initiatives this year. We started the theme really the first week of school, and it's a simple idea, the idea that Little Harbor School is a golden rule school, and I think that concept speaks for itself, that you would do unto others as you would have them do unto you. We had an assembly to launch that, and it's a message that we are driving home, you know, at the classroom level, at the individual level, as we work with kids and help them work through the, the bumps in the road that they encounter as a, the natural course of their experience in school. And something else that our related arts team has done, they've really championed a lot of this year, they also developed a SEAL award, and the acronym that we've used is Strong Encouraging Active Leaders. And so, what we do is we have, at each grade level, we have a monthly award. And we, we've done it once so far for the month of September. We announce each winner, we call them down. As they come down to the office, we have staff in the main hallway applauding them, giving them a certificate and recognizing their good behavior and really kind of catching them doing good and putting what values we think are important, compassion, kindness, leadership, kind of putting those on full display and making sure that those are kind of out in the kids' minds every single day as the kind of behaviors that we value as a school and as a community. And so, those things have dovetailed really nice, really nicely, excuse me. And then we also just had a fantastic residency, Mark Levitt and Len Cabral. They did some work at the middle school last year, and Karen Webb introduced me to them last year. Thanks to the Little Harbor PTA and some Little Harbor parents who kind of pitched in to make up the difference, we had a week-long residency with these storytellers. And between Mark and Len, they have been, I think, over 40 countries, performed at a presidential inauguration, won storytelling awards all over the world. Mark has a radio show. Incredibly, incredibly dynamic storytellers. I mean, talk about, you know, rock stars walking around the school. I mean, kids really look up to these, to these gentlemen. And so, they, they tell stories. Some of the stories are based out of their own real-life experiences and perhaps embroidered upon a bit. Some are folktales from Africa and from other places. But they develop themes around inclusion, kindness, self-confidence, and that kind of thing. And so, it was a really great, really dramatic kickoff to the kind of work we're doing, you know, taking all of our kids and really reminding kids of what we think is important, the values that we believe in, and really coming together as a community. So, that was just a fantastic thing. They did a teacher workshop after school one day, and we had an evening performance for the entire school community. And we're going to be continuing that work this year. Andrew French, our art teacher, is creating a banner which all students are going to sign. And this banner has some of the lessons that the kids learned from Mark and Len. So there's one great tale that I'll kind of share with you quickly, where there are two neighboring farmers and they have a feud. And so as a result of the feud, one of the farmers decides to take revenge on his neighbor. And he digs a ditch and he lures his neighbor's mule into the ditch. And then his, the idea here is that he's going to bury him in the ditch. And so he starts throwing the dirt back in. As he throws the dirt back in, he heaps it on the mule, the mule shakes the dirt off his back and then stomps it down. And this goes on for some time until the hole is full and the mule is standing at level with the farmer and the mule just walks away. You know? And so what Len Cabral does with that story is remind kids, what are you going to do when somebody keeps negativity on you? What are you going to do when somebody teases you? You're going to shake it off, stomp on it, and walk away. And you know, and I've been able to use that with kids, you know, in my office, talk to them, again, helping them negotiate some of those difficult situations that most kids face in school sometime or another. So we're going to put some of those sayings on it. We're going to have all the kids sign it. We're going to put it up in the school. We, some parents and teachers are looking at developing classroom libraries around some of these themes, kind of anti-bullying themes, inclusion, kindness, leadership, some of those kinds of things. And more than anything, just taking some of these things and just weaving them through the school day. I had a great conversation with a first grader the other day where one of his compatriots had tried to lure him into some sort of misbehavior. And I said, "Well, you know," I said, "I'm really very proud of you that you resisted that temptation." He said, "Well," he said, "I know it's a Golden Rule School." He said, "I really want to get the award." So when the kids, and it's happened a few times, when the kids start sending these things back to you, you feel like you are having an impact and you are helping to kind of shape their values and shape their behaviors. One thing that I did want to mention that I didn't put on my agenda, but hearing some of the great work that has happened at New Franklin as a result of Title I, one thing that we have done this year was to make really a big second effort to try and get as many free and reduced applications in as possible. With obviously, first of all, making sure that, you know, kids are fed and taken care of, but also, of course, with an eye towards, you know, hopefully regaining our Title I status. So that remains to be seen. But as you see, you know, that work, even though money, it's not always a lot of money, but it can make a big, big impact, I think, as you heard George talking about earlier tonight. And I'm sure we have more than one thing coming up. I just put one thing down here, but Fall Fest is our big fall event. It's something I always look forward to. It's a great community builder. It is a big fundraiser, but we get a huge turnout for it. It's a, you know, kind of one of those beacons every fall as we get back into the school year and welcome everybody back. And it's a great day. So, any questions?
Any questions? Yes, Rebecca.
Mine is just the same question. Have you noticed a difference with the loss of the outreach counselor and how have you shuffled guidance around?
So yes would be the short answer. And of course, obviously, the loss of outreach coincided with a big uptick in our population. You know, and I think whenever you get X amount of new kids, you know, there can be some percentage of those kids who have some of those challenges around behavior and so forth. You know, we have unfortunate, Alyssa Brown, who has been working in the district, she is at Little Harbor three days a week, so that's mitigated some of that. You know, we feel it when she's not there. And how do we do it? Some of those challenges with outreach and the kids at outreach services, those are priority one, there's no choice. And so if I have to drop something that I'm doing to deal with a situation, or if Sue Pedersani, our guidance counselor, has to, then that's what we do. And there's no doubt about it. I mean, we do feel an impact. I mean, you know, I think we do what we have to do, but some days it's harder than others.
Thanks.
Carol.
I just wanted to say thank you, to you, for all your efforts you're doing. I think that you've had a very difficult deck of cards dealt to you this year. And technically, you should have an assistant principal and you don't. So you're doing the job of two people, but getting paid only as one person. And I just want to tell you that I, both as a member of the school board as well as a parent at Little Harbor School, I sincerely appreciate all the effort that you've put in and I think you've done a remarkable job. And I think part of it is that you have, and you recognize, that you have a fantastic staff and you're giving them what they need to be able to do the best job that they can do. And they're stepping up to the plate and doing it. And I think it's, you know, it's still early in the school year, but it really seems from everything I'm hearing from other parents and what I'm seeing, it seems like, given the difficult situation, everybody's just rising up to the occasion. And it's really amazing and I think you're a big part of it. And the way you treat your staff is a big part of it. And I really, really appreciate everything that you've been doing and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol. Yeah, and I don't want to beat that horse, but it was very satisfying that first day of school to walk around and see things absolutely positively nailed down. We have our challenges. The lunchroom is very, very full. It's not an ideal situation, moving kids around the building is challenging. The lines just go on forever and ever. And I worry longer term about some of the effects of class size and that sort of thing. So I don't want to say that things are perfect, but I think, given the situation that we're in, again, I, you know, it was a nervous August, but my staff gave me confidence and I received a lot of support from Steve and Ed and also from my principal colleagues as well. So I feel like I'm very lucky to work with the people I do, given the situation that we sailed into. Thank you.
Tom and then Leslie.
Charlie, I just wanted to mirror the comment that, you know, my walking through the school, what I'm most amazed is that, you know, people have really stepped up to the challenge. And, you know, there's smiles on people's faces and teachers are happy and kids are happy, most importantly. And, you know, having two kids in the school, things are operating as if nothing has ever happened. And it's amazing how well people have adapted and teachers are embracing the change. So it's, you know, while it might not be ideal and there are some inherent challenges to having that many students, it's a great story to tell. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Leslie.
First of all, I'd like to remind you that the first year you came here, I reminded you that Halloween was very important at Little Harbor as well. And you, in fact, dressed up. Do you remember what you were?
Do I, can I say that on air or?
I just want to let you know I have a picture.
Oh, jeez. I've been informed by staff that I'm O for two. Superman Year One and a banana Year Two, apparently. So it's, if anybody has any suggestions, I'm open. But clearly, there's been a failure in leadership in this regard. I have to take responsibility for that, so.
Something we all look forward to.
And also, I had a question about the handicap parking. I know the Safety Patrol used to address that with parents when they would park there. Have you found any ways to address that with, I know, parents often park there just to let their kids out or, you know, to come and go really quick. And I saw in your letter that that was an issue. Is that something you've been able to address?
It's an ongoing thing. And, you know, like you say, I mean, some people kind of stop and drop and go, and I don't think that that is an issue in and of itself. And, you know, it's one of those things, it only has to happen once in a while, only have to walk out once at the end of the day to see a vacant car without a handicaps, you know, placard or what have you in a handicapped spot. So I don't want to blow it out of proportion, but it's one of those things, you see it happen a couple of times and you think, you know, what are we doing here? You know? And it's tough, parking is tight. You know, I am sympathetic to parents, I know that, I hear that a lot, but that's just something that we can't do. So one of the challenges with that is, you know, often you walk out and you see a vacant car and short of just, you know, sitting on the hood or something and waiting for someone to come out, which I have, I always had on the hood, but I've waited for someone to come out. You're not always able to kind of corral people and catch people. So it's something, it's one of those things, it's a work in progress. It happens once in a while. But again, a lot of that is about the message that we send to kids. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one quick question. So in your talk, you mentioned something about one hundred and ninety-one parent volunteers and the impact clearly that that brings to the schools. And also, hearing your little outline about the PTA and, you know, its impact and help with school climate. So if, I don't, this could be a dissertation, so don't talk forever, but I'm just curious. So what would you say, what do you think is the role of the PTA in helping to create school culture and also the role of the PTA in fostering student achievement?
Well, I think the PTA is a forum sometimes for parents to express their concerns, their hopes, their wishes. You know, obviously, whenever we have a PTA meeting, of course, I'm there. They always keep me on the stump for a healthy amount of time. And it's one of the opportunities that people have to talk directly to me and to do it in a group. You know, not just to walk in as an individual into my office, say, "I have a specific concern," but to kind of talk about, you know, issues and ask questions and say, "Oh, these people have the same questions I do," or the same concerns or are pleased with the same things. Quite frankly, we can't overlook the fact that one of the big pieces of the PTA is a financial piece. We would not have field trips, we would not have R S and residents, would not have had these storytellers. And, you know, one of the things I always remind people inside and outside of the school is we have all these amazing programs. We, you know, it's something, a lot of it's something we take for granted, we value them, but they become part of our culture and part of our fabric at Little Harbor. You know, I always think the spaghetti dinner is the one that really, it's our biggest fundraiser. But leaving aside the money, there are parents who stay at the school until midnight or one in the morning, pre-cooking spaghetti to make that happen, you know? And a lot of people just kind of see the end result of those fundraisers. And that's why I always make an effort to say, there's just a lot of plain old grunt work. It's not intrinsically rewarding, it's not romantic, it's not fun. But there's a lot of people who give up their time to contribute their time and to raise money and to bring people together as a community. You know, I mean, Fall Fest is a nice fundraiser, but it's also kind of that sentinel event in the fall where people come together and see each other on a, hopefully, a crisp autumn day.
So as these parents, you know, the nice part about it is you get to keep them for like six years. So, and that builds up a pretty strong relationship. So do you think that the impact of the culture that the PTA, working with you and the teachers helps set, really helps student achievement?
I would think absolutely. I mean, I think in ways that are hard to even quantify. One thing I should hasten to add, and it's even for some of us who are at Little Harbor all the time, we forget this, technically, the PTA and the parent volunteers, we have PTA volunteers who make like Fall Fest, the spaghetti dinner, and all kinds of fantastic events happen. But then the parent volunteers are kind of in the school every day, making copies, helping out, you know, kindergartners on lunch, all these kinds of things. That was an initiative that kind of grew out of our teaching and learning team and really has a life of its own. Kathy Daly is our parent volunteer coordinator. And again, I mean, you know, how much does it contribute to a child's growth if that child knows, and all the children in the school know, that all the adults are working together not just for that one child? You know, if you're a parent at Little Harbor and you're in, you're not just working your child's classroom, you're working across your child's grade level. You know, and it frees up teachers. I mean, you know, I think last year, we had the equivalent of, I think it was, four full-time staff members, the volunteer work that was contributed. And that's real work. I mean, that's four people doing work and leaving teachers to their essential tasks. So I think it's huge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question.
Quick question.
Do you have a plan for the parking during the election?
No.
That's an honest answer.
I mean, you know, honestly, like at the last PTA meeting, we talked about some traffic issues and I've been looking at the, you know, particularly during drop-off, particularly looking at some of the traffic flow and I got an idea that I'm working with the courage to kind of unleash and we talked about at the PTA meeting. But some of the challenges we face in terms of space and in terms of parking, you know, there's a finite set of solutions, right? I mean, you know better than most what that setup looks like. I mean, we have limited parking, our staff parking takes up a lot of that lot. And then you have cloud drive and then that winds its way into the neighborhood there. So, I mean, clearly, it's something that we're going to have to plan for. We haven't gotten there yet. But again, it's a challenge.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen. Ms. Callahan? Hi.
Thank you for having us. I really don't have anything else to say. They did a great job. No, so as you know, we had an unfortunate situation happen over the summer and I have to be honest and say that it's probably the best thing that could have happened for me and for my staff and for the community at Don Darrow. We have really come together as a team. We have parents who have come through the door with open arms, willing to help, willing to engage. We have staff who looked and reflected upon some of the change and have come together as a team, not only as a grade level, but as a vertical component. And so you see a lot of partnerships happening among each other to really work in partnership to better the education for students, also to bring up the morale of the school. They really have come together to brainstorm different ideas. We have a committee working on climate and culture. We have parents who are willing to come in to help paint, to help copy papers. It's been great. So I want to thank my staff, I want to thank my parents, I want to thank George and Charlie and Joanne and Ed and Steve for really standing by me as we kind of plowed through this. So in addition to that, we, kind of taking the leap from Summer Learning Lab, we spent a lot of time at the beginning of this year and over the summer, really looking at our data from last year to either reflect and enhance or to reflect and make some changes. And with that, what I decided to do with my CINNI money is hire a literacy consultant by the name of Cynthia Merrill, who has come in to work with grade-level teams that didn't show the amount of progress that I had hoped that they would show from last year, from the beginning of the year data to the end of the year data. So she's working with second grade and fifth grade. And what she is doing is she is helping them become more reflective in their practice and really helping them to define what a year's worth of growth looks like. And in doing so, she has talked at length about their units of study. And so instead of just pulling out the same binder year after year and implementing curriculum, she's been taking it apart and dissecting it. And so we spent the past six weeks, she came in August, worked with teams, and then has continued this growth, on really looking at, what does that launch look like in literacy? What do we need to do in September and October to prepare those students to be readers throughout the rest of the year? She's also kind of in the back of her mind and their minds, keeping the idea of the common core really at the forefront and thinking about how we can integrate science and social studies into our literacy instruction. And so she is there about once a month. She's taking the Japanese lesson model as a way to use it as a format, so teachers are coming together, they're planning instruction, she's doing some modeling, they're reflecting upon that modeling. Then they are going into another classroom and they are putting out, or putting forth, I should say, the same type of lesson that she may have created and brainstormed with them based on the needs of those students. So what it looks like in second grade is very different than what it looks like in fifth grade, but the same idea is behind it. We also have Kathy Collins, who is a consultant who was at Little Harbor, she's at all three of our schools. And so she's working with kindergarten to really look at literacy centers. And then she's working with first, third, and fourth grade to also reflect upon their practice and to really help them define what they need to do to monitor progress. And so she's giving them different tools, she's offering different ideas. Once again, going back to our work as a team, she has put in place a system where teachers are working in one classroom for five to six sessions. They're watching a colleague instruct, they're coming back and looking at what worked and what didn't work. She's then going in and working next to that person and really instructing from a lens of what the child needs rather than what the teacher needs. And so she's right now working in first and kindergarten and then she'll move into third and fourth. And teachers welcome her with open arms, they welcome both of them with open arms. And it's really shifted, I think, our energy into not just saying this is what we need to do, but looking at data and looking at student needs and student outcomes to say, this is what they need and this is how we need to respond to those. We also have a math consultant and Little Harbor Foundation has been kind enough to help fund some of this. And so she is working with teams of teachers to help them analyze data and also to put in place our intervention block, which we are calling WIN, What I Need. And so we talk about the students who need to have more time to learn a concept, but we also have students on the other end who need to be enriched. And so she's helping them use their mid-year and end-of-year data from their math assessment to decide their math assessment to decide what we need to do to focus on a six-week period to say, "How are we going to move these students forward?" And in doing so, she's helping create pre- and post-assessments so that teachers have some current data to implement, reflect upon, teach, and then come back and see what those results look like after that six, it's actually four to six-week period. Again, she has worked as a team, so she's working with PLC teams. And so, instead of looking at just a third-grade class, she's looking at all of those third-grade students as one unit. And then those teachers are differentiating among themselves to meet the needs of those thirty-six kids. We also, this year, we restructured our Unified Arts teams, and there were some gaps in some of their schedules. And so, Heidi Satt is my phys ed teacher, and she's doing a wellness program for students in grades four and five. And it's really looking at the body as a system. And so, students choose that as an elective one day a week, and they go in and have, in addition to their phys ed class, they also have this program where she's talking about healthy eating, exercise, taking the Five to One O Initiative, and really bringing it into a different, at a different level. The PTA is a huge, huge organization right now at Don Darrow. I can't thank these people enough. After we had the choice happen, I had three of my PTA board members move on to Little Harbor. And so, we had to recruit three more, three more officers. And so, within two weeks, we had Tanya Gervell step up to be our president. We had Rob Yeton step up to be treasurer, Sherry Whitworth as secretary, and Cliff Lazenby stayed on as VP. And without them, throughout August, I don't know if we would have opened the school the way we opened the school. And they have rallied the troops from a parent's standpoint. They have brought a ton of energy to staff. One of the things that they did was they gave each staff member a $50 gift card to start the school year, just to say thank you. And then really took their initiative of what they needed and put that in place. So, when the doors opened on, you know, in late August, they were there to help teachers get classrooms ready. They were there to greet new parents. They were there to do a watermelon welcome, or we'd do the popsicle party. And it was wonderful. They also, Cliff Lazenby and I met with Charlie and the people at Little Harbor to take their volunteer program and really implement it into Don Darrow based on what Don Darrow's needs are. So, our goal was October 1st to have it up and running. Since before school opened, we've had at least ten parents in every single day photocopying, laminating, helping me send out our weekly Wednesday packets. I have one parent, Julie Machado, who is taking all of my, all of my news, so to say, putting it into Publisher, printing it, and then sending it out to the masses. We have parents who are in, helping the, my administrative assistant, Nancy, organize some of the office needs. We have people who cover her break so that she can have a thirty-minute lunch break, so that staff can be busy with kids or be working in partnership to develop new programs. We also decided to take the PTA, and instead of just always focusing on the fundraising, we said, "Let's come up with some committees that would really support what we need inside of the school." And so, what we decided to do is, we're going to have a fundraising committee. We will have a community building committee, and they'll have a communication committee. And the communication is really where all of that news that we want to celebrate will go out from. The fundraising committee will be those events that we need to raise money for. And then the community building is ideas or programs that we can put in place that really bring people together. And it's not about raising money, but it's about celebrating the successes within. So, our first one is coming up. It's at Emory Farm, and it's a corn maze. And so, what the PTA has done is they've hired a bus so that families who don't have a car or don't have the transportation to get to and from can hop on a bus. We got Mose to cut us a deal to do bag dinners. And so, people can pay that, I think it's $2.50 for a bag dinner per person. And then we'll all load the bus on the twenty, I think it's the 21st, go to Emory Farm, do a corn maze, and then come back to school. So, it'll be great. The other big piece is, and I actually want to thank you for this, is that we have, are consulting with the Parent Information and Resource Center. And so, over the summer, we heard a lot of the reasons as to why people were leaving Don Darrow, but we still have 340 students who are there. And so, it was really important for us to get their voices from the parent perspective of what is working. And so, those surveys will go out tomorrow. All of staff will be asked to survey, to complete the survey, and then we'll collect all of that data, and we will share it out. And hopefully, it will tell us what we're doing really well and areas that we need to improve. There are seven parents who have volunteered to be on this committee. It's a commitment of two hours, once a month, for the remainder of the year. I have seven teachers who are also on this committee who will be coming together to really analyze that data and also to come up with some new initiatives on how to, how to voice out the good and also what we can do differently internally. Just like George and Charlie have talked about, we too have professional learning communities. The SMART goals that I have shared with you are the two, two grade levels that, well, that I will be really following closely from a reading standpoint. Like I said before, second grade outcomes weren't as great as I had anticipated, and neither are fifth grade. And so, we're putting a lot of energy into what we need to do within those two grades. And so, looking at the end of second grade, knowing that those students are now in third grade, what systems we need to put in place to really move them along so that they will be prepared for fourth grade. So, you'll see those two goals. We're also having, our math goals are also a big piece, focusing on the open response, reasoning, and fact fluency. And that's really across all, all six grades. And then, like I said, our intervention block is, right now, we're shooting for three days a week, and the goal will be to be at four days come January. The other two days, on Mondays and Wednesdays, is Open Circle, which is our social-emotional curriculum that we, that I talked to you about last year, that will still be in place at school. And then, coming up, we have Emory Farm, like I talked about, we have Girls in the Run. And that is a girls' program where we, it's head by Lisa Chapman, who is my guidance counselor, and two teachers. And so, they meet twice a week for an hour and a half. They run, they engage in some social conversations. And their big 5K is on November 20th, so please come out and support us. We also have our Token Craft Fair, and what that is, is it's a craft, it's a craft fair that we ask local residents to participate in. And all of the, all of the proceeds from that will go back to those students who either need scholarships to participate in after-school enrichment activities, who may need assistance for field trips. And then, a big piece I want to also bring to your attention is Cliff Lazenby has done a remarkable job of updating and maintaining our PTA website. And so, like George was talking about, his Wiki, a lot of our information is shared out through the Don Darrow PTA website. And so, if you have a moment, please go to that. You can see your Wednesday weeklies, which is a little, a little letter from me. There's updated information. There's different community events that are on there. Every time we're in the news, we're going to try to spotlight the positives that are happening.
Great. So... Any questions? Yes, Dexter.
So, Kate, to use the same metaphor that Carol used, in the deal where Charlie got a horrible hand, I think you might have got a worse one. And I have to say, I really appreciate the positive approach you've taken to what is a real challenge for you and Don Darrow. And I appreciate the enthusiasm, the focus, the focus on building a collaborative organization. I appreciate the work you're doing with the PTA and the Don Darrow parents. And I just want to encourage you to keep up the good work, because you're only in your second year as a principal, and a lot's coming at you. And from my perspective, you're doing great.
Thank you.
Rebecca.
The same question about the loss of guidance, although you've been a little busy.
I have to say, what we have done is, we looked at the change in what had happened, and I have to give Lisa Chapman a lot of credit. She has, she came to me and said, "In order to meet the needs of students, I need to be a little more flexible with my schedule." So, this morning, we were at school at 7:30 with a parent, because that met their need. We've restructured systems within the school to make sure that students' needs are being met. Her paraprofessional, who is Bree Jacobson, has really put in some small group work so that we can be more proactive rather than reactive, not only in the younger grades, but also in the upper grades. And so, yes, there is a loss, but I think what we have done internally is, we've, we've thought through this, and hopefully, we'll continue down this road of, like I said, being proactive and not waiting for something to happen. It's definitely been a shift in, in culture.
Carol, and then Leslie.
I want to echo what was said about you being dealt the difficult deck of cards and doing really, really well. I think, they say that you don't really know a person until they've, you've seen them weather adversity or be really tested. And I think, early on in your profession, you've weathered adversity, and you've been tested, and you've stood up very well. So, I think that's great. And I thank you for everything you've done and the way you've handled everything. I also wanted to tell you that I thought the article in the paper was excellent.
Thank you.
And I thought it was a fantastic picture of you sitting on the floor with a student. The look in your face and the student's face was fantastic. And I think it was just the epitome of an elementary school principal engaged with their students. And I think that picture spoke a thousand words. Thank you for what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Leslie.
I want to go back to that number, fifty-seven more elementary school kids. How many new families do you have this year?
As of today, thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine new kids?
Yeah.
Wow.
Where are they coming from?
In migration. What I learned is, we lost, obviously, a bunch of students. And all of a sudden, the doors kept opening and opening. And every day, I'd have to, you know, make more packets for some enrollment to re-enroll these students. And so, based on the location of Don Darrow, as you know, Route 1 has many apartment buildings. And so, as I started to really start looking at, at where the families were coming from, I started to ask a little more questions of parents. And what I found out is that there are a lot of local businesses who are hiring consultants. And these consultants aren't really being hired by the actual company, but they're being hired through a consulting firm out in California or Chicago. And so, a lot of the families who have joined us at Don Darrow are here for either a year to eighteen months. And so, when my second-grade numbers dropped drastically, all of a sudden, they started coming up. So, right now, we're at twenty-one per class. And it's, it's taken a little bit of an adjustment, because we, you know, at the middle of the summer, we thought we'd have seventeen in the class, and all of a sudden, you know, second grade became that, that one group. And then, I also have met with many realtors. And so, they have come in and interviewed and asked some great questions. And so, I'm finding that because of where we are from the Elwin Park area, there's a lot of houses that are for sale. And so, a lot of the realtors are bringing students and families in to meet with me and to, toward the school. And so, that's also been a change.
So, what is your total student body right now?
We are at three, I think, three thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Three, it's either three twenty-nine or three thirty-nine. So, there was an influx in second grade. Third grade was pretty flat, fourth grade. And then today, I had a new first grader enter.
And we had twenty new students at Little Harbor, right?
Okay.
Been interesting.
Wow.
And a lot of it's last minute. There's no, you know, someone showed up today and said they want to enroll tomorrow.
Thank you.
Jan?
I'd like to kind of echo what Dexter said about, about your positive attitude. As I consider myself a Don Darrow alum, and I have seen the evidence of the cohesiveness with all the little signs around my neighborhood. They're just everywhere. And people are all abuzz in a very positive way about the school and about you. So, I thank you as well.
Thank you.
Carol?
Yes? I just had a question. Can we get some feedback on literally where these students are coming from? Some sort of analysis of, you know, I mean, I know it's this one momentary point in time, so it's not going to give us a lot of information. But something I find frustrating is, we look at population predictions, and that's all we have, and they're not necessarily right.
I have to say, though, it's not from one place or another place. So, we have, I think, a positive that I would like to say is the diversity that has happened. So, we have several families who are, who have been relocated through Liberty Mutual. And what has happened is, they are from India. And so, what I feel is a really positive is that we now have children coming to school and sharing the cultural differences. And it's been a wonderful, wonderful aspect to be able to walk into a classroom and either hear a conversation about different types of food, or to talk about different types of celebrations, or planning a trip to go home to visit family. And then you have other families who have moved either from different pockets of New Hampshire. And so, we have some more off of like Route Eighty-Nine by Concord. We had a new little boy today from Derry. And then we've also had some families move from Kittery down into Portsmouth.
Thank you.
So, it's, it's really diverse.
So, if I could just wrap it up. So, I would echo much of the praise that people are putting on you this evening, because you've done a great job since you've been here, especially this summer. I did want to talk a little bit more about the PTA, but I think that you're, what you've said is that something, you've had like a hundred and eighty-degree turnaround in terms of the relationship of the school and the PTA. I think something you said, just very quickly as you were giving your opening statement, I think was one of the first times I've actually heard that. And that is that three of the board members of your PTA, the people who are supposed to work most closely with the school to improve the climate, were the ones who actually left the building. I hadn't heard that really before. So, that's kind of surprising. But it turns out, a boon for you.
It was a boon. And the first PTA meeting, we had over sixty people. So, we all crammed into the library, and, you know, people didn't know where to sit. No one knew how to, you know, present out. It's huge.
And these are the people who will help create, as I was asking Charlie before, create the climate that exists in the building.
Absolutely. And I think the other piece is, we've now welcomed people who may not have chosen to come into the school for many reasons. We're sitting in that room, and now we're saying, "What can I do to support? I may not be able to give up time, but I could, you know, cut at home. I may not be able to volunteer in a classroom, or I don't even know how to read, you know, at a fifth-grade level, but I'm willing to do X, Y, and Z." And so, for me, that shows that success of that partnership between school and the parents.
Yeah. And that whole thing is a little surprising to me, because usually, you don't see members of the, leadership of the PTA abandoning the school and going somewhere else. That's kind of surprising. But, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
When we need to know how to make lemonade, we'll, we'll know where to come.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you all for coming. It's truly been a great series of presentations. I think people in Portsmouth who have kids in the elementary schools, and even those who don't, can feel really happy, comfortable, secure in the fact that we have some great principals and other leadership as well. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Bartlet.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've included the financial results in summary through September. I'd have to say that the results are pretty typical of the end of the first quarter of the school year. There are some minor variances in salaries and benefits, but that's pretty typical with only one month in session with students. And we usually take September and October to try to, you know, make sure we have the staff aligned for the maximum special ed reimbursements that we can, that we can, you know, access, and just to make sure that everybody's in the right place. In the operating section, there are a number of departments which are showing different historical patterns than in the past, but I attribute that to the fact that this year, there was an extensive turnover in department heads and team leaders. And so, it'll take them a year or two to get accustomed to taking on new responsibilities and looking at the beginning of summer and looking forward to starting school in the fall with, with everything that people want them to order. So, we're a little bit different than, you know, last year's plan, but certainly not a whole lot different. We're, we're in a, pretty much in a similar position that we were in last year against the entire budget at this time of the year. The substitute line is even better this year than it was last year. But again, it's still early, but, you know, I like to, like to think that everybody's still, you know, pitching in and doing a good job and keeping that down. And then, Class Center 207 pretty much, you know, mirrors the activity of the, the other funds. The encouraging thing in that is that our Medicaid reimbursement vendor is, I believe, finally caught up with our submissions, that the staff has worked very hard to make sure are included. So, we're, you know, we're a little bit ahead on Medicaid reimbursement at this point in time.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Leslie.
The paraprofessional line, is that due to the, here is at Little Harbor, that line?
Because we had savings in certain areas, you're going to see some overages in salary lines that we will offset at future dates with other, you know, with other savings. You know, as we identified areas where we saved in hiring, we added an extra pair, because we, you know, were able to forego a boiler replacement, things like that. So, as we get a few more, you know, a few more months into the year, those will line up a little better.
Letting move that way.
Well, it'll, it'll, it'll end up being negative, but I'll be able to point out what the offsets will be.
But, the adjustment is due to us having to do it to the pairs at Little Harbor. We hired, we did that sheet.
Six.
Yeah.
So, that's that cost.
That's right. Some of it, yes.
Some of that is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And hopefully, that won't, that category won't overrun by the end of the year, is what you're saying. You'll be able to pinpoint.
We'll be able to pinpoint what we're going to offset it with, yes. We just have to get a little further down the road and get more than a month. We actually only have a month with, you know, in-classroom employees on the books. So, it's going to take more than one month's worth of results to get that lined up.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. So, moving on to old business. I think what we have, if I can find the sheet, is a listing from our retreat. And so, basically, on the back sheet, you'll see, these are the things that we actually had on the walls during our conversations during the retreat. Ed, you want to speak to how you broke them down?
Well, so, yeah, so, on the backside, it should have been the front side, the top-ranked school board goals, you know, we use that rule of a third. So, there are ten of them that appear with, having received five or more votes, et cetera. So, they're there. And I tried to capture all of them and show you how they broke down. And then, I just simply, in a draft fashion, tried to format them under the four big categories you've had. Typically, one might argue, something belongs somewhere else. And just tried to show it in a fashion that you've, we've used the last couple of years, just as a draft for conversation.
Okay. Yes, Rebecca?
So, these goals, the one through thirty, were done in the afternoon session of the work session?
Yes.
Okay. So, which I had to leave early for. But, I just have a question. So, physical education really comes above technology as a goal? Number three, identify how to expand physical education opportunities. And then, number eight, we talk about defining technology infrastructure. Number nine, using technology to enhance teaching. Is that really?
Those were the, those were the way people put there.
Wow. Did they explain how it was done?
Sure. So, I think, using that rule, it was a brainstorm list. People could put anything they wanted on the wall, ergo, those thirty goals. And then, I think, were there ten or eight little dots? And you couldn't bank them all on one goal. You had to spread them out. And so...
Voting with dots.
Okay.
So, I think the...
So, parenthetically, that's what you're seeing there.
Yeah. But, I think the important thing, Rebecca, as you look at these, is that all top ten are integrated in the proposed goals. And so, at that point, there is no prioritization. What we're saying is that those ten goals rose to the top. And there wasn't any attempt, once those rose to the top, to establish priorities within them. And they've all been integrated into the school board proposed goals. So, it, I mean, it's sort of, I mean, I'd argue, it's sort of a moot point, whether PE is above or below technology. They're both there.
Right. No, it was just sort of shocking to see that that was number three. And I know that this board has been very committed to technology and moving it forward. So, that just, that just stuck out.
It turns out, it turns out that during the process, Clay just made an incredible pitch.
Of course, he did.
That was compelling.
Well, I'm sorry I missed it.
Well, it was Clay's pitch. It was Clay's pitch. But, I think everybody agreed that, you know, that phys ed and health consistently throughout K-12 is woefully inadequate.
Yes.
And so, it's really a way of looking at other, not just saying, should we have more PE classes? But, are there, what are the other ways we can integrate health and phys ed into already existing structures within the school day and the school year?
And to get our one from five to one-oh.
Okay.
We're all putting our dots there.
Sure.
Thank you.
It's too bad you missed it.
No, it was pretty good. So, any other comments on the way it's laid out, the way it's presented? I think he's captured, yes, Dexter.
I think the administration did capture what the school board attempted to do. I guess one of the questions I'd have, though, of the administration, as they look at this, is if we were to approve this, do you guys think you have the capacity to begin to commit resource? I mean, some of these are already in play. And some of them are new. So, I'd ask the administration, are you confident that you can commit some resources to begin to push these objectives forward?
To be successful.
I mean, because we haven't put work plans on them yet. So, obviously, that is a driver as well. We haven't set target dates or any of that stuff. But, is there anything now that, as you compile them, that you would say, it may be too ambitious for 2012, and help us in that discussion? Or, are you saying with your proposal, we think we can make progress on each and every one of these?
I don't mean to speak for Steve and Steve. We'll do all the work. But, no, I'm kidding.
That's why it's easier.
No, I think, I think they're right on, actually. We felt comfortable with the goals, actually, as a result of the workshop and setting. And, you know, we're not asking for, you know, I don't know, we didn't place it as a vote on your agenda tonight, but we would go back and then develop a work plan and reporting out over the course of the year, back to the board on where we are with these various goals. That would be our hope.
Any other, yes, Carol?
I think I would like to reflect on this more, what has been done and the way it's been organized and the way it's been worded. And I'd like to think about, and I think it'd be good for the board to think about, what does this document mean? What is the purpose for this document? Is this something that we want people to pick up and say, oh, I know what the Portsmouth School System is all about. These are their values. This is what they believe in. I want my student to go to school here. Or, do we want this to be an internal document? Do we want, do we want this to be, is this step one? Are there some other things that we should be thinking about, around visioning, around values, and ideals, and principles, and theories? I guess I would pick this up. And I don't know if I was saying, as a parent, gee, do I want my son to go to school here? I don't know that this would get me really cranked up. But, maybe it doesn't need to. Maybe it needs to be an internal document that's sort of bureaucratic in the way it's worded and the way it's laid out. You know, maybe that's the point. But, I don't know. And I don't know if it serves all the goals and purposes that we need. Maybe it serves some of them. Maybe it's a start. But, I think I would need to think about this a lot more and know a lot more about what the point of this document is, before saying that I think this is really something that I would feel really comfortable, being a school board member, having this out in the world as the document of the goals of the entire Portsmouth School System. I mean, there's nothing wrong with anything that's in here. It's just some of the things I mentioned about values and principles and wording that I think could be improved. And then, the other comment I wanted to make is that I think the WAVE organization just did, they broke out into groups and they did goals for the educational system. And it's available on their website, I believe. And I think it would be interesting to look at what their goals were, just out of curiosity, to see if any of our goals are the same as their goals. And just to think about that.
I'm going to take just a slightly different reflection on this, because I think I hear a number of things that have been said. And the goals here that have been stated here are really goals that are specific to the school board. And I think part of what I'm looking at this document is, is goals that are scheduled here for the school board and the administration. And they're not necessarily specific goals that are, we're asking for students, or how we're going to deliver education. But, it happens to be some very overarching strategy that comes down to saying, you know, these are goals and tactics that we are going to implement during the school year. And I think maybe what I see helping people understand is if we actually draw a line and tie in some of these goals to actual tactics, so that, you know, when people sit there and say, wow, that's an interesting goal, you know, what are we doing to achieve that goal? And actually tie things in, because we're actually talking a lot about things today. Today, with elementary principals, we've got SMART goals, and we have this summer program, and we've got PLCs that are working, and we're expanding things out. These are blocking and tackling activities that are going on a daily basis that tie into achieving these broader goals. And I think that's probably part of the biggest thing that I think we could do to help people out, is to tell the story a little more broadly. And I know I've personally told you that I was going to provide some thoughts on how we could communicate this better. But, I think that's really the missing piece, is to be able to articulate the goals for this year in a slightly different way, that ties in all the work that's being done. Because I think this could be looked at in two different ways. One, goals that are for the school board versus goals that are sort of broadly district-wide based. Because, you know, clearly, there are things that are missing, if we want to sit there and say, yeah, what are we doing for the district? But, this is something that, as a board and administration, we're trying to tackle. And I think if we do it that way, we can be clear, things can be more measurable, people can understand what's actually happening on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, that we are doing to try to achieve those goals. And I think, from your standpoint, you know, being able to read back out on those goals, knowing full well that these are the tactics that we're doing. As a board, they'll be more measurable, they'll be more meaningful. We'll be able to understand, you know, where do we need to make adjustments and tweaks as we move forward to try to achieve them. So, I think, you know, in a roundabout way, going back to the fact that we just need to maybe tie the two pieces together and be able to maybe come up with a communication plan that people in the community can understand a little bit better. Thank you.
So, it sounds like partly what's, might be missing, is a narrative that explains to the community, is kind of what I hear you saying, about what the school board's goals are, as opposed to the way they're written here. Which, personally, I have no problem with the way they're written. But, if you actually look at what they say, that's a lot of meat here on this table. You know, so, it's sort of reaffirming our commitment to professional learning communities, and that, you know, we're not doing it, but we're asking the administration to monitor it and report back to us and let us know how things are moving forward. Moving forward on a K-12 technology plan, and adding more curriculum frameworks in areas that we've been, you know, that have been on track for the last number of years. But, we focused on math and literacy and reading. And now, we're looking at some of the other ones that were sort of a little further down the line, like art and health and PE. And so, I guess, one thing that's missing is maybe a written narrative, Carol, that might be helpful to explain what we want to do. And the other is, I mean, part of it, it sounds like you're just, you just might like to see the goals written differently. Is that?
That's one issue.
The language that's used, and, you know, part of...
That's definitely one issue, for sure. I think I have some other issues as well. And I need to, like I said, I really do need to think about this some more, so I don't want to say anything.
So, let's bring this back.
Yep.
Two weeks?
Could I say something?
I'm sorry?
Could I say something?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Carol, I'm just wondering, when you've talked about an internal document, I'm looking at the backside as pretty much internal. And that really was just a list of all that brainstorming that just went up. So, there wasn't any set, you know, consistency about how that was stated. So, that would definitely not be something that would be published as is, kind of thing. That's really internal for us.
Yeah. I think kind of what I'm getting at is, for instance, as you pointed out, Mitch, the PLCs, that's such a focal point. If you were writing this to an audience that was not educators, which, my question is, are we writing it to an audience that is not educators? Or, are we writing it to an audience that is educators? If you were writing this in good English, you would not use that acronym, and you would not use that. You would describe it as collaborative learning, or some other term that describes it in words that ordinary people use to describe that concept. And so, that's just one example. I could probably go through here and pull out twenty-five words that are jargon. And that's fine if it's more of an internal document. If it's written for us, because we all understand the language, and we can talk the jargon, then it's fine. But, if this is something for regular people to look at, it should be written in regular English. I do like the idea of the narrative. That might help, I think. But, you know, that, it's just, you know, whenever you write a document, the first question is, who are you writing it for? Who's your audience? And that's the question I don't think is answered, for me, anyway, satisfactorily.
Right. Yes, Dexter?
So, I mean, from my view, Carol, I mean, I think your point's well-taken. There actually are two, my views are two versions of this. This is the shorthand version for us, who are, at the board level, are somewhat involved. And for the administration that live and breathe this stuff, they know exactly what this means.
Right.
But, we need to make certain that as we communicate our work to the community, that we put it in terms that the layperson can understand. And it's connected, to Tom's point, so that there's a logical way where people understand that the mission and vision that we have are being executed by what I would say are really our specific objectives within four broad goals. That, when you look at them all together, you can say, yeah, firstly, I agree with their vision and mission, and they have a, they have a plan on how to get there. This is part of that plan of how we're going to get there. And then, you can measure results. Say, how'd they do, both on resource commitments and all the rest of that stuff. So, I think it does need more work. I think we might have a shorthand document that we're comfortable with.
Right.
But, then that gets supplemented with a broader document that's posted on our website and other places, that communicates what it is we're doing for the broader community.
I could agree to that. That sounds fine.
So, people want to spend a little work session time on this?
Yeah.
Is that what people are suggesting? Or, have the administration...
Didn't you say you were going to do something? Yeah. You were going to grab something?
Yeah. Halfway there. Yeah. I think the piece to Carol's point is that we could actually spend some time in just understanding and trying to figure out, what's the best way to communicate this to the community? Absolutely. I mean, for my, I don't have any issues with the document, but I think work session time on thinking about how this is going to be communicated and understanding what's the best way, the best format, medium. Absolutely.
Okay. All right. So, we'll put it on. And moving up to new business.
Yes. And you're, actually, the policy committee is advancing two policies for first reading this evening. The first, they're both required by law. So, they're pretty much boilerplate policies coming out of the Hampshire School Boards. The first is an update outlining the process by which a person or persons would grieve if they felt they were subject to discrimination under Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. That's pretty formulaic and described there. The second policy is, you know, a required change under RSA 193(c), which basically charges a district with developing and managing an assessment program that provides meaningful data to teachers, students, and their families. And its first reading would bring back in November for policy approval.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Yes, Leslie?
Kent had a few suggestions that I just wanted to bring up.
Absolutely.
Where it says principal, in the third, on the first 504 policy, the number three. Where it says principal, in the third, on the first 504 policy, the number three, principal shall communicate. We might want to add, you know, or, designate, or language like that. And then, where it says responding in five days, we might want to add working days, because we've had issues in the past, workdays instead of just five days.
Which, which five days?
The next one down, in number four, where you have five days to respond.
Five. Five school days?
School days. Oh, it does say school days.
School days, school days, school days.
Right. Five school days, is that okay?
So, those would be working days.
Yeah.
Monday through Friday. Okay. Any other discussions on this?
Just one question, it might be more rhetorical, but all of our schools meet handicap accessibility, you know, guidelines. I mean, I know, but I'm saying, we have things in place to get people, you know, I'm just thinking about this as a guideline, we have means to move people around who might be handicapped in all of our facilities.
Is that a question?
It's a question.
Oh, do we have?
Do we?
Oh.
Do we? I don't know all the facilities, but, you know, I know we've got ramps, or we've got ways to, elevators, you know, lifts, I mean, just like we have out here in the front. You know, it might not be handicap accessible in, from a new construction standpoint, but there's a, physically, a wheelchair lift and things like that. Should I retract the question?
No, no. Don Darrow's a singular floor, as is New Franklin. At Little Harbor, you have the two floors, you have the lift.
Right.
No elevator.
Right.
If you were retrofitting that, I think you heard what Doran Whitty would suggest, you need access to stage, et cetera.
Yep.
But at the high school, you have the elevator, we're perfectly situated at the high school, and I think the middle school has an elevator currently, and they'll be in better shape when the project is complete.
Understood, okay.
Okay. Yes, Rebecca?
So, would this include something like, I know that the doors are not handicap accessible, like, you can't even get into the building? So, it doesn't matter that there's a ramp or an elevator or it's on one floor? So, is that something that we're going to, that with the Doran Whitty recommendation, have the push button so the door opens so you can get into the building? Because it, I don't know, I just, what Tom was bringing up, I mean, if you can't even get into the building, it doesn't, it's sort of a moot point.
Yes, Dexter.
I think we need to separate the grievance process-
Right.
-from making our facilities fully handicapped based on whatever federal or state requirements there are. All this is laying out is the grievance process if someone has an issue. So, I'm not, I mean, it's a separate issue, it's not, it may be an important issue that we need to address, but this specifically is putting in place a process if someone wants to formally file a grievance.
Right.
Right.
Specifically to Section 504.
Right.
I understand that, that this is the grievance policy, but I think that we should look at the doors.
Well, the broader issue is if we want assessment of-
So, you facilities people.
Right, but it's a separate issue.
I think, I think as changes are made, they're changing out the hardware appropriately, et cetera, I think, now I understand what you're asking for, is that the push button that would open the door-
Right.
-into the entryway of the building. That can easily be done, and something we should look at.
Okay. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second on both of these for first reading, so, you want to take them separately or together as a packet? There's not much discussion, so we'll take them together?
Together's fine.
And we'll just take a roll call vote on this first time around, just so we can have a record.
Yes. Carol Chelman?
Yes.
Rebecca Emerson?
Yes.
Kent LaPage?
Yeah.
Leslie Stevens?
Yes.
Ann Walker?
Yes.
Mitch Shulman?
Yes.
Tom Martin?
Yes.
Dexter Legg?
Yes.
Clay Haywood?
Yes.
Thank you. And the next piece under new business?
Yes, just procedurally, I had a call from the city manager. I guess bike racks are going to go in with using Safe Roots to Schools money at Little Harbor as well as St. Patrick's School.
Yeah.
And the city council was having a conversation, and would we like, and I think the answer's yes, but I'll suggest yes, would we like the city council to help us put in a bike rack at New Franklin as well as Don Darrow? Now, I know New Franklin's well on its way to having a bike rack put in, so, process-wise, they wanted you to weigh in on this and-
Yes, we say it, Don Darrow.
We're zoning.
Yes.
As well as New Franklin.
So, you want to make an official motion?
So, you want to make a motion to approve the city's offer to provide bike racks at New Franklin and Don Darrow elementary schools?
Seconded. Seconded. Started a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Committee updates? We have JBC.
So, a couple of items. The JBC has approved GMP number three, that's the guaranteed maximum price for construction of the Paradav Middle School renovation and expansion. And the construction cost is to be no greater than $30.2 million. Obviously, that's the biggest chunk, and that's the last GMP that the committee will vote on. The other two GMPs were related to the turf field at the high school and the alumni Wentworth softball field. The committee has a couple of big budget items left. Furniture is one of them, and technology is the other. And over the course of the next, I would say, 60 days, the committee will be working through those budget items. And when those are locked down, and then we'll know with what I would say is a level of confidence that we're going to do this program for the $37.5 million. More work needs to be done, but the committee, I think, is feeling pretty positive. And the second item I would put on and invite the full board to join us tomorrow, Gilbain is providing a site visit at Paradav. I think everyone knows the steel is up for the addition and the youth recreation facility. Gilbain is going to be conducting a tour of the site tomorrow at 5, be there at 5:20. You won't be able to walk the steel. You won't be able to get to the second floor, but you, I think you will get a sense of space. So, I would really encourage everyone to join us if you can at 5:20. I think, Steve, is it just right outside the parking, right out the parking lot, at the, sort of the gated entrance? And I don't know, Ann or Leslie, do you have anything else to report on the JBC?
No, I'm looking forward to that tour tomorrow.
Yeah, me too.
We talked about the beam with the kids-
Yeah, last time, we did report out on the topping off ceremony.
Still there.
And the beam is still there, the flag and the tree are still there.
I noticed they did the same thing at the credit union.
Right. Okay, thank you. And we had our first elementary schools facilities committee meeting just prior to this. So, I'll just report briefly, and we'll have more information when we write up the minutes. But basically, so, two things came out of it in the short term. One is, we thought we wanted to create a website that would have many of the resources that the group's looking at, a bibliography of materials and reading of reports. So, the website would be created. And the second would be that we're going to create a bibliography of some basic reports and articles, and in some cases, some final reports from other school districts, and share them, look at them, read them, and come up with an executive summary as to what these reports are about, and look at the pros and cons of a variety of configurations across the board. That's really our first step. You know, we talked a little further down the line of trying to figure out the best ways to have a public hearing, maybe even to have a little bit of facilitated meeting, maybe to do some surveys, so we'll develop that a little more fully. But basically, the first steps really are to educate ourselves and to get a better handle on what some of this literature says. So, okay?
Your next meeting is when?
The next meeting is in two weeks, which would be just, it would be prior to our next school board meeting. We're going to try to do that. Anybody have anything else? Yes, Leslie?
I don't know if anybody else went to the dedication for Phase 2 at the high school, but it was, it was amazing recognition of our students and the community, and I don't know if any of you have driven by the Phase 2, which is complete, but they have this beautiful, I don't know what you call it, granite monument. Monument, I think they're calling it.
Yeah, and it has like a bell.
It has the bell on it, the seniors ring, and it has-
Yeah, it looks really, really good.
Commitment, community, leadership, and-
Excellence.
Excellence, I think, yes. Engraved around the, it's rectangular.
Yeah.
And it's just beautiful. And the ceremony was really moving, and the community members who participated and, you know, donated toward this were there, and the students had to solicit donations from these businesses, and it was such a partnership. And there was also a moving dedication to Barbara Porter, who was the nurse that passed this past spring. And it just was phenomenally done, really just well done, and I was so proud of our school and our kids, and it was very nice.
And what struck me, I'd just been reading in one of the, one of the journals, school board journals or whatever, regarding, how do you, how do you judge your school? What is it? Is it just test scores? It should be more than that. And all I could think of was that evening at the high school, because this, this was all these kids, it was all about the kids. Each one came up and personally thanked the community, the businesses, who were so patient with them and how they learned, and it was just absolutely incredible. So, that's really what it's all about.
Well done.
Fabulous.
Okay. Anything else?